Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Harper.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Brennan. Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Reverend McDowell, you're not saying a word?
Yes. For Lord's sake, that you've done for us for life, health, and strength. For the promise of your presence in our lives, we simply say thank you. Bless us as we gather together today in this room. Allow us to be sensitized to all that we hear and all that we talk about. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. We have on here adoption of the agenda, so I can't. Do we usually adopt it in a work session? I guess we do, Ms. Erin.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, that's true.
Motion to adopt the agenda as listed with one amendment. And is adding Core Campus Estoppel Agreement to executive session. Item number four, discussion, negotiation, incident to propose contractual arrangement pursuant to SC Code 30-4-70, Section A, line two. For a second?
Second.
Got motion in the second. Any further discussion, hearing unseen, um, Madam Clerk? Read the roll.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Harper.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes. Aye.
Thank you. We are getting started with, uh, two really good discussion topics today that I know, um, you all have particular interest in. And then this work session, um, will probably be the last before we really get into some budget items with the next series of workshops or work sessions. So thank you for your time in advance. Um, with that, we'll start with item one, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Mr. Daniel P. Biggs, Associate Regional Planner for Weston and Sampson. And then, of course, Assistant City Manager Henry Simons will tee it up.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, and good afternoon, Mayor, uh, City Council. Uh, thank you all for giving us an opportunity to, uh, present to you, uh, today. Um, today is a, it's truly a, a milestone, uh, for the Parks and Recreation Department regarding the 10-year master plan. Um, this is really going to be our GPS for our vision for the next decade. And I want to thank, uh, Kenya Bryant, our interim Director of Parks and Recreation, along with our Deputy Director, Doug Illy, who's here with us, uh, Todd Martin, our City Landscape Architect, and all those who have been supporting this effort. I mean, it's just been an amazing, um, time that we have been able to bring this together. And, uh, the plan, um, uh, also highlights, uh, what's working well. I think you all need to know that there's some great work going on currently in the Parks and Recreation Department. And, uh, it highlights that, but also, uh, confirms what we need to continue, uh, as well. Uh, the, the, the beautiful thing about this, this master plan, uh, is it's driven by community engagement, um, making it very inclusive. So we were very inclusive in our public input sessions and engaging the public and with our surveys and, and with our, uh, open public sessions that we, uh, held at several, several locations. It was, it was, it was great. Great feedback, great participation. Some of you all, of course, attended some of those sessions. Uh, this plan also challenges us to be more innovative and creative and what we offer our communities. Uh, so you'll see that, uh, in this plan. And the presentation that you will get today is, is a summarized presentation that Mr. Biggs will, uh, present to you. That is in this booklet here. Okay, that is in, in this booklet. This is a summarized PowerPoint presentation that you will get, uh, behind the actual agenda. So you'll see that presentation you'll get today. And the actual full master plan report is in a binder in front of you, which has all the details, but we're going to get a summarized presentation, uh, by him in just a moment. Um, and then our goal, uh, is, is as we have this dialogue and this presentation today, the goal is the 15th of next month, in our council meeting, of course, we want to bring a resolution to you officially to a vote, to actually vote and approve the actual master plan. So the goal is to have the dialogue today, present it to you, get your feedback, and then you can take some time to review the actual plan. And the goal is to come back on the 15th and have an official, uh, vote on the actual plan. So, um, thank you all so much, um, for this today. Um, I'm very excited about what you're, what you're about to hear. So let me have Mr. Daniel Biggs come up. He'll walk you through the actual presentation. Daniel?
Good afternoon, everyone, uh, members of the council. Thank you for having me. It's great to be back. And we're in the home stretch of this almost year-long process. Uh, but most of all, thank you because I think the residents of Columbia are going to have a great tool for the city to use and guide the city in the next 10 years on how to improve the Parks and Recreation facilities in Columbia and really just guide where you can go and what, what the possibilities are within Columbia. I knew it wouldn't work. Uh, so today, a really quick overview of the presentation I'm going to give to you. First, review just the project. Uh, we're going to give a really high-level summary of the public input that we have heard of what has changed the last time I was before you. Really high level of the needs and priorities that guided us to lead to recommendations and gave you some snippets of the goals and action plan. Really the tool that's going to be used to guide you all through the process of implementing this plan over the next 10 years. So the project, uh, really, as you're familiar, is really to create or to develop a citywide strategic plan for Parks and Recreation. This is everything from the parks and greenways to the recreation facilities and programs. It's everything that we've been talking about for the last 12 months. And really, the goal is to have a plan that's usable by you all and by the department, uh, that has a clear vision and also goals that can be implemented with priorities. So they know what to focus on and when. Uh, having strategies on how to operate and to manage park facilities and really have a financially sustainable plan that can be used to, uh, be innovative, but also be sustainable for years to come. So our process for the last 12 months or so, uh, you've seen this before, but we're in the home stretch. So we've gone through the kickoff meeting, uh, gathering input, looking at trends and demographics, hearing from the public multiple times, uh, sharing what we have heard with the public, and finally, our final presentation today to come up with the final document. So starting with public input, uh, at a high level. Uh, we had multiple sessions, including coming before you. Uh, we've been to many public meetings. We had a youth survey, which I shared with you last time, and a teen survey, which we have updated and added additional input during those surveys. We had an online survey, which was mostly, uh, in, uh, a web, uh, online, uh, survey. Uh, we had some in-person, uh, survey responses as well for those community members that, uh, weren't able to do the online survey. Uh, and then we gave you update last time. And finally, our findings presentation was shared with the public, uh, several months ago at this point, which has culminated in an entire overall master plan. So summary on the public input, we had over a thousand respondents to our online survey. Uh, this was a random open link, which I shared with you last time. Uh, we had, uh, heard from, uh, all demographics within the city and all districts. We also had a youth survey and teen survey, if you recall, last time we presented. Uh, since that time, we have reached out to additional schools, additional youth to give input. So that went from, I think, about 50 students to another 50 or so, uh, to add additional input. What was great with those youth is that they have a different perspective on how they use your parks and facilities. Uh, and we were able to capture those ideas mostly, mostly through a graphical representation of their ideas. Uh, but that was great to see the similar trends input from the various additional schools that we did reach out to since last time I was here. High-level needs and priorities. So we heard, shared with you last time, um, there was a high interest at if you improve condition of your current facilities. Nearly three-quarters of respondents would, uh, visit and would increase utilization of parks facilities. Over half of respondents said improving safety and security would also support using additional parks facilities within the city. And restrooms were the most prominent need for improvement. So these needs are definitely embedded within the recommendations that you'll see here in a few minutes. We also heard there was a high need for increasing trails and greenways within the city, access to the river, renovation of existing facilities, and preserving open space and land acquisition. So all these priorities really was the foundation we used to develop recommendations for our plan. Recommendations. Uh, so recommendations you'll see in the binder are broken down into four categories. Uh, we have administrative recommendations, basically used for staff on how they can operate, be more efficient with either programming or with just operations within the department. We have recommendations specifically for programs within the city. So programs for youth or for seniors at specific locations or broadly across all, uh, use interests within the city. We have recommendations for parks and facilities. Those are separated. And the subcategories for those are broken down between maintenance and compliance, upgrades, enhancements, and a comprehensive overall, uh, in, need for, um, improvements within facilities. And all recommendations are broken down between different timeframes. So we want to give an idea as to what should be completed within the first two years, three to six, and long-term, seven to 10 years. And there's also recommendations that will be used that should be implemented over a course of time. So as opportunities arise, those interests could be, or recommendations could be implemented, um, as the needs arise. Uh, two examples, recommendations that we have, Heathwood Park. Uh, one is looking at increased opportunities for parking. We had heard through the public engagement process, uh, need to look at what are options and how to increase parking. So in the midterm timeframe, we look at mysteriously, what could that look like? Uh, it's not necessarily, there's a solution on the table right now, uh, but there's something to investigate to see how could Heathwood Park, uh, resolve that need within the park facility. Hollywood Rose Hill Park, another example. Uh, we had a interest of, uh, developing outdoor splash pad. Uh, so it's a park upgrade enhancement for that park. Could be looked at in the near term. And we also have a cost associated with what that look likes for budgetary purposes at Hollywood Park. So our goals and actions really is the guts of the document that you'll see. Um, we've broken the goals into seven main goals of the master plan. Uh, first, starting with continuing to support community health and wellness. Second, engage the community. Third, programing community events. Fourth is to maintain, improve parks and recreation facilities. Five is to expand and grow parks and recreation facilities. Six is community connectivity, and seven is organizational operations and efficiency. So these seven goals, uh, we've broken down into strategies, uh, that are, uh, can be used by staff to then, uh, develop further within each of these goals. So the first goal, looking at continuing to support community, well, health and wellness, our strategy is to accommodate residents of all needs. So what this means is that, uh, looking to basically, um, support and promote programming and services for users of all needs within the community. For example, you have currently providing, um, food services, food support, some facilities. So expanding that to other, uh, locations within the city would be beneficial. Strategy number 1.2, upgrading safety and security at parks, especially lighting or, uh, cameras. So looking at implement that goal at select locations, uh, would accomplish that strategy.
Mr. Mayor, question. Just want to make sure, when y'all say upgrade safety and security, is it safety and security measures like lighting and other things like that make it appear to be more secure? Because honestly, we haven't really had any crime issues or things like that at our parks.
Correct. Um, so this strategy 1.2, specifically, we heard of interest by residents at Districts 1 and 4 having additional measures for safety or lighting within parks, specific parks. It's not a broad wholesale need to upgrade all facilities from a safety standpoint, but increasing some locations specifically.
Uh, feeling more secure.
Perception of the safety, I guess I could say, yes.
Not that we need security guards out there.
No. Correct.
So, so as an example, let's use Finley Park as an example. So our goal with Finley Park is to, what we are doing is adding emergency call boxes and cameras to Finley Park, which we've never had that before. And that makes people feel more comfortable. If something does happen, they have access to those devices as well as cameras in the park. Also, park rangers will be there. So that is to help ensure, to make, to make people feel comfortable. If there's a perception of where people feel unsafe, we would try to do that, you know, in other locations as well. So you're, you're, you're exactly, you're exactly right.
I think the councilman makes a good point, though, um, regarding sometimes, you know, out of context, if you pull the report going forward and it just says, "Upgrade safety and security at parks." So to your point about getting a little more granular on the title as far as, um, I forgot what you just said, but it sounded good, the percept, perceptions.
Improving, yeah. So it's, it's kind of a little wordsmithing too. So we don't, I don't think you want to say just improving perception. Cause that may portray that people aren't safe or they think they're safe. So it's a balance there.
And deterrence, to deter crime.
We can work on that.
We can work on it, um, but, but.
But I know, I agree with them that, you know, we, we also want to portray what we are and that we right now have very safe, um, facilities at parks.
And maybe it's defining it as to at locations of, uh, high need or high interest based upon our, the input that we did receive. Uh, cause not, not nearly every park had the interest or the need or, uh, concern for safety. So that, that's a key point there too. Yep.
A good example is just this past year.
During this fiscal year, um, you know, MLK Park, they needed more lighting in the, in the, uh, in that back parking lot. And we were able to implement that. Uh, Ben Arnold, uh, they, they needed more lighting in that parking lot also. So we were able to do that. Um, and also South Addis though, they needed more lighting, you know, in the front. When they, um, when the, when the staff got off at night, they, they wanted to have lighting in the front, you know, in that area. Plus the community wanted the same thing. So it's very specific.
Enhance measures, enhance safety and security measures, something like that. Okay. Thank you.
Um, so the same goal, strategy 1.3 is looking at to support community health and wellness needs. Again, uh, Parks and Recreation serves more beyond just simply recreation. You know, there's sometimes a shelter facility or provide, uh, housing or, uh, food services during catastrophes or severe weather events. So just supporting that and making sure they have a plan, uh, and to support the needs of the community. Uh, goal number two, engage the community. So looking at, uh, engaging with the Parks and Recreation Foundation. Really think that's a good, great avenue to really embrace, uh, the mission of the foundations to promote and cultivate vibrant part, public parks where communities connect. So really supporting that, leveraging them to be an asset for the department to use and to support, to lean on. Uh, second strategy is to develop a Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Uh, having a commission to have the department to use, utilize, to get feedback. So it's not just a one-done, but it's an ongoing conversation of the needs in parks and the residents. And really that, uh, purpose of that advisory commission could be to advise, uh, policies or just the needs within the parks as well as, uh, future needs and evaluate this plan and progress as they're moving through the years. Uh, so having that rebound, um, opportunity to rebound ideas with a commission would be beneficial. And that commission really should be made up of members from each of the districts as well as varying demographics from youth to seniors. So you do get that various perspective, uh, on, uh, commission. Third is to collaborate and partner with departments, community organizations. They're doing this now, really just to support that, whether it's a planning or engineering, uh, working hand-in-hand with our departments to implement the plan. Uh, cause sometimes they may maintain trails, but they aren't necessarily the ones that are building them through some of your greenways. So really embracing that and continuing that con- conversation with different departments. Uh, continue to reach out to the public. So we had a fairly intense public engagement process through this, through this plan. Uh, we don't want to stop now. Ongoing communication to hear the wants and needs or concerns of residents is really important. Really think that should be, uh, encouraged and continued through the next several years in duration of the department. Goal number three, programing community events. So strategy 3.1 is continue to provide community programs, events, whether it's from farmer's market, pop-up concerts, movies in the park. Uh, knowing how a Finley Park coming back on board, really embracing those programming, having a strategy and how to embrace, provide that to the community is really important. Strategy 3.2, review recreation program offerings and just annually. So, uh, we want to make sure that the department stays up to speed on what the needs are of the community. Uh, sometimes may have ebb and flow of different programs. Doesn't mean you have to drop programs, but just constantly be on the ball to know, uh, what is a trend happening? What are the interests of the community? Should we introduce more programs? And maybe some programs should be put aside for a period of time, only from a staffing standpoint or for a financial standpoint, maybe beneficial. And also with that, to partner with other, uh, service providers within the community. Not everything you provide has to be provided by a city staff person per se, but you may have other partners that can do that effectively, efficiently, cost-effectively, uh, to provide that for the members of the community. And simply the department's doing that already, but possibly, uh, directing more people to other providers. Uh, so if you have entry level, entry level karate within department, maybe the expert level karate is at, is at a judo or a, at a studio that can provide that. It's not coming from staff, uh, from the department, because that may not be best use of their time and their expertise. Goal number four, maintain improvement parks and recreation facilities. Uh, really here is looking at, uh, assessment of the different parks that are rated between a high, medium, and low rankings. Uh, really addressing those needs from the, uh, those that really got low levels and high interest needs. Uh, really improving what you have now. Uh, within parks, so many trails and pathways, uh, so currently some need to be upgraded, but really focusing on the connectivity within parks themselves and upgrading what you have to meet the needs of residents within your park spaces. Goal number five, expand and grow parks and recreation facilities. So again, similar to the last, uh, goal, but here is looking at, uh, improving programs and many support needs. And strategy 5.2 is review parks and program needs on a regular basis. So looking at what you have from a parks physical standpoint, improving what you have to improve, uh, amenities within your current park facilities. Goal six is community connectivity, really focusing on your greenways and trail system. Uh, really embracing the, the need and desire to have a robust greenway system within the city. Uh, again, working with our departments to support that mission of connecting to the rivers. Uh, so not only connecting between parks, but to new spaces, uh, here is looking at this goal. And finally, goal seven is looking at organizational operations and efficiencies. So looking at how to improve efficiencies within the department, uh, mate, from maintenance to other organizational, um, kind of efficiencies as well as, uh, finances. So where can you save funds and where can you allocate more funds to? Uh, so making sure that department's operating efficiently. Improving communication within department and to the public. So now I'm looking at to, um, how are they talking with the public, but also how are they sharing with their own staff? To making sure that's efficient so that as, uh, new plans are rolled out, everyone's on the same page. Um, really obtaining an RPA accreditation is the next strategy. Uh, that is the, the, um, measure, I'd say, for parks and recreation, recreation departments on your status of being accredited. Uh, this plan is one piece you need to have become accredited. Uh, so really aspiring to have accreditation really is, uh, a goal that the department should aspire to. And finally, last strategy is look to develop a sustainability plan. So not only looking at to how you maintain your facilities, but also doing the sustainable measures and, and manners of moving forward. Uh, that is kind of all-inclusive, whether it's from, uh, resources and finances or simply where should there be no mo zones within parks, uh, while still maintaining current facilities within the department. So a little sample that you see within your binder, uh, example, uh, from goal number two at the top, engage the community. This is example we're looking at to engage with the foundation. And below each of the strategies, we have actions. Action 2.1.1 is to organize the friends of groups, volunteers. Uh, so here we have, uh, the action, the cost, be no capital cost for this item and some staff time to organize and coordinate that with the friends groups. Uh, and timeframe is short-term, ongoing. So ongoing to engage, get community volunteers into, into parks and have them organize to support, uh, the needs of each park facility. Action 2.2 or 2.1.2 is to support the fundraising and grant funding. So again, looking how to work, leverage the foundation to support from a funding standpoint or, uh, applying for grants, uh, with staff time in the short term is the action. Goal, goal number four, maintain improved parks and recreation facilities. Here again, we have the goals, the strategies, and the action here is improving a quad facilities. Uh, in this case, we had capital costs, so give an example of cost from a splash pad, uh, reconstruction, or adding listing stations to facilities and what that looks like from an operational budget and a timeframe would be short-term and ongoing. So every goal has a series of strategies and these actions that staff can use to basically cross off the lists we've accomplished or modify as they progress through the plan over the 10 years.
Why is the splash pad so expensive?
Uh, this case, uh, we have recirculation splash pads that are, um, happening more with automated, um, activation. Uh, so it's not just water simply being sprayed like a hose anymore into a drain, because that's not as sustainable. They're being recirculated almost as a, I want to say a mini pool, but they have a decent system, yeah. So based upon, uh, these are numbers based upon past projects even from the department that we've used. So it's good to know what they are from budgeting standpoint when you ask for more splash pads within different parks. But, um, try to be, uh, realistic here as to what to expect as you look to accomplish these goals.
That's a good old hose. What I grew up with. You don't need to put any hoses in this park.
Disting station is an option. A little less expensive.
I don't see a pickleball court anywhere.
There's a whole list in the.
Yeah, there's a lot, there.
In section two.
So my sample doesn't cover all the, the many goals and actions.
Sponsored by Prisma Health. I'm shooting.
More orthopedics.
That's a definitely sponsored one. But overall, this is just random, my own application. How, I guess, popular are pickleball courts really across the board? Not just in one certain district. Not very popular, are they?
Um, pickleball is probably the most popular, one of the most popular paddle sports right now. Not only here, but across the country. There's other sports called paddle, not to confuse paddle or pedele. Are two other sports that are out there right now. Yeah, uh, pickleball. Um, there are other sports that are coming, you know, introduced more from a European, uh, interest that are happening. But pickleball is still very hot. And the nice thing about pickleball is that, um, you can retrofit a court to add pickleball. So you can have, as long as the parties are friendly together, they can work together. Pickleball and tennis specifically. Uh, but you couldn't, here, go back to tennis if you at all had to, would decline. I don't foresee that happening because it's interest to so many of the age demographics interests where you have entry levels, you know, players to ex, high experience of youth to seniors. Um, it's a very attractive sport.
You find young people playing pickleball?
I'm seeing leagues and teams starting at the high school level right now. Yes, we're designing pickleball courts for high schools. Um, yes.
Let me ask you this. You're probably too young to know this, but do you remember racquetball being popular?
I played racquetball, yes.
Now.
I'm not that young.
Do people still, do y'all get business about people being interested in racquetball?
Racquetball is not as popular compared to paddle or pedele in the current terms. It's still being played, uh, but that's an indoor-only sport, right? It's four, four walls, very similar to, um, paddle, but a little different.
In the past, when, would you say racquetball was just as popular as?
I don't think so.
I'm a pickleball guy.
Okay, no other questions?
I, I don't think so. I think, uh, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out if, if pickleball is really as popular as it is.
Yeah.
Pickleball lobby is strong.
Yes, Howard. I mean, the Tyler.
The pickleball lobby is working really hard.
Yes, Howard.
Howard didn't like pickleball?
He loved it.
He loved it, but never played it. We didn't find that out.
He may be an unregistered pickleball lobbyist. Pickleball lobby is working hard.
Let me, let me also say this about pickleball. So we, we have, um.
Will you take a dose?
Uh, just, just to add a little bit of context, um, we have pickleball courts at Southeast Park, which are very active, very active at Southeast Park. We have four at Southeast Park. We have two at Woolen Park, which is very active. We have a very active pickleball team or, or activity at Greenview. Uh, there, there's lots going on at Greenview with pickleball. There's lots going on with pickleball at Charles R. Drew Center. So it is a very active sport right now, acro- across the, across the city. So just FYI.
And we see, and, and actually, we've seen the phenomenon of pickleball over the years. Um, over the years, we started with a, with a small group.
Sure.
And then we started talking to Drew Wellness.
Sure, sure.
And there are various teams over there. So it is, it's growing.
Yeah, that's the axe for Maze Park. So pickleball courts would be at Maze Park as well. So a lot of communities are asking for that and that's what we have been providing.
To that point, we actually did a little research in the document due share of other pickleball facilities in the general region that are significant, just to note. So it's growing elsewhere too, beyond Columbia, which was. It's still there, still demand, more than racquetball.
I rest my case.
I think what we're seeing there. Maze Park is a perfect example of this. I mean, we may have to put up a fence around Maze Park before this is over to keep you out of there. But I mean, I think traditionally in Columbia, people just haven't really thought about the city being a partner with their quality of life. Okay, so I think what we can really do, if we do this right, is really expand the green space, parks, recreation services, amenities, on and on and on. And I think you'll just see that people will absolutely gravitate towards these activities. So they just haven't thought about it.
It's activation and when you activate it, people get excited about it. Meaning that's what, I mean, at the end of the day, when Finley Park is finished and you have all these events and things going on there, it's going to be a totally different park than it has been over the last decade.
Because you're.
And Maze Park's the same way. It's been empty for a decade.
Longer probably.
And now, I mean, it's finished and you went by there Sunday. It was packed.
I took a picture of it and sent it to my family. And you know, that's what I'm saying. We've got to raise our game. So I'm glad we have the template to raise our game. And I don't think you can put too much cost or value on quality of life. And we have to, we have to keep selling ourselves. That's part of our job. I say it's pretty much all my job is quality of life purposes for the community.
Well, that's where I think, to Henry's point, the perception of it being different is going to be important too, whether or not there's hopefully never any like issues with safety. I do think that Finley Park, for example, there's still a perception that you can fix it, but it'll still have some of the same problems because of its location or whatever the reason may be. So I think investing in that activation 24/7 or having someone on call that can be there. If someone wants to go run at 5:00 in the morning, it won't be an issue.
Any more questions, Councilman?
No other questions.
I know what I'm getting Tyler for his birthday.
That's what we got, Howard.
Yeah, that's when we found out he didn't even play.
But one of the things that is, one of the things that is striking. The new developments in the Haven and Gonzales Department, especially the Haven, they've included pickleball courts. And we visited that place. We visited the pickleball space and it's there.
Yeah, yeah, people want it.
So the activity, so the thing that could really happen in places is that these courts are being developed in strategic places. And residents are beginning to find out that this is, this is their attraction and the phenomenon that is happening.
Completely agree. It is a quality of life component, right? So just like having safe place to walk and ride your bike or to, you know, recreate in green space versus, you know, a highly developed area. So it's a benefit that people are looking for and they're going to seek it out. The last example I have here for is community connectivity. So this is looking at actions of increasing, expand the greenway system. You have many plans out there looking at to work with other departments to continue that progress. William Street Extension, the other properties you've acquired, just increasing greenways and those costs will vary. Provide one cost from the Vista Greenway. And then staff time obviously is a component, but also that's a midterm, ongoing need to fulfill. So working towards that is a goal and strategy within the plan. As we wrapped up the plan, you know, there's a lot of goals and strategies, like I mentioned, but really we feel there's a couple ways that this will be well-received. And the first is it's a guide for the department as well as the city, but they need to communicate that across the board to all staff. So getting the buy-in from staff so that you can have staff support from all levels, from those that are maintaining the grass to meeting the students when they come off into the programs. So in developing staff champions really is critical. So that's not on administrative side, but everyone's endorsing the plan. Tracking how you're progressing really is key so that you can have that kind of scorecard on annual basis. Know how are you progressing within the plan? And that leads to kind of reviewing that annually to know, what have we done, what should we be doing differently? Are we pivoting on some of these ideas? But really utilizing it as a tool to guide the city to improving parks and recreation. So that was our process. Our next steps here to get your feedback, to kind of finalize the plan, but also share with staff. So we're going to be going through this with staff. They'll get copies of this as well, digital or paper to liking, just to have as a tool on a desk to use. It really guides the department in the next 10 years on how to improve parks and recreation.
One thing we were talking about earlier today when we were going over the downtown makeover plan. Like micro green spaces in more livable areas like the Vista Downtown as we get more and more people. So converting some parking lot into a smaller type green space that had to have a purpose to it necessarily, like, you know, splash pad and all this stuff. But there's a place where some people can have a picnic, somebody can walk their dog, blah, 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 blah. Can we put some of something? So I think that's really important for us. And we've got plenty of land in Columbia to try to convert to green space.
That's great.
So I would love to see us kind of do a five to 10-year conversion plan of some of the parking lots in Columbia, especially as we develop and bring more people downtown.
Yeah, pocket parks kind of sometimes are titled. Great idea, converting from unusable spaces or spaces that have not been cared for over the years that can be green spaces, right? And it is those little nooks that people want to sit and get some shade or just to have a lunch or to, you know, have a family, whatever have be. Great spaces to make a place more livable, to your point.
Yeah. Part of our overall plan, are we going to invest in irrigation and everything as well? Because that's one of our biggest complaints we get is that, you know.
Yeah, every.
All this space, but we don't have, we own the water company, so we ought to be able to irrigate it.
So every project that we have recently did or completed, like Owensfield irrigation has been added. Maze Park irrigation has been added. All Southfield irrigation is there. So everything we're doing now, Hyde Park irrigation has been added. So that's, I heard you loud and clear before on that. So yeah, we've been doing that as well and we'll continue to.
Because I think, you know, the stronger the appearance, the more people we utilize it, which then deters.
Not the wrong utilization.
Right.
The most recent one is Randall Avenue Park.
Yeah.
You don't have the picture handy, do you?
I'm sorry?
You don't have that picture handy, do you?
Randall Park, I don't, I don't.
It's a perfect pocket park.
Yeah, it's.
Unbelievable lot.
Irrigation's in.
Yeah. The irrigation is there as well at Randall Avenue Park. So yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir. Ken, you want to, you got to close. Just in closing, I really want to say that I'm happy that we went through this process. It was very much needed and it's going to give us something that we never had before, which is a game plan, you know, a roadmap on how we need to take care of our people within the city of Columbia. And one thing I really am happy about is that we did get staff involved. We had several staff workshops and I think they're very excited about this process because they actually see it happening at the same time. They do see the fact that we're improving, you know, Randall Avenue Park. That new park has come, we're putting new signage up. You know, we have new trash receptacles out there that are utilizing the colors of the city. So we're being more integrated with what's going on with the city. And the best thing about this plan is it's coming at the right time because of the direction that the city is taking with the greenways and the connectivity and it's speaking to that too. And so, you know, we're here, we're ready and hope for your votes to approve it so that we can get on to the next big project, which is to become accredited. Thank you.
Great job.
It's exciting.
Thank you, very excited. Thank you, good job. Our next.
If we have questions, just reach out to you after we have a chance to review this.
Okay. Okay.
What he's really saying is Mr. Ryan. If it's good, tell Henry. If it's questionable, call Henry.
So moving on with some wonderful updates. This is our quarterly update from the Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Dr. Trevon Fordham is here, our director. And probably members of his team, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Hey, you're not.
Handle it all on your own.
They have some other projects that they're taking care of to get some things done, so.
Yeah, it's in here as well.
All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. And providing a quarterly update from the Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Okay.
I think it ran in. Here we go.
All right.
I already put Jeff Paine on there. Maybe parts.
I'm sure you do.
Okay, so just beginning to update. Just in jumping into the presentation, one of the key things for the office has really been being in an assessment phase, but also really kind of ironing through what the office is working on. We've got three main essential pillars that we really work on. I'm going to hit that second one first as far as research and strategic planning. That takes in the vein of both quantitative and qualitative. So looking at the numbers and the data, but also getting out, talking to residents, talking to folks and seeing how they're feeling, what's going on in their communities. A lot of times we can get an overarching vibe of what's going on citywide, but it's very important to get out and talk to folks, talk to neighbors, get feedback from them as well too. The training and development piece, we've been able to get out and work with different groups. We've done speaking engagements, worked with some folks on neighborhood safety. We've done some different presentations when it comes to conflict resolution, anti-bullying. We've done some presentations on a number of different things that focus with youth and also adults. The big part of our office so far has been the community engagement and outreach. That's been key for us. And I'll talk about that pillar more as we go through the actual presentation. Although the office did switch the name from the Office of Neighborhood Safety to the Office of Crime Prevention, to the Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the aim remained the same, the mission also remained the same. So it's really all about peace in our communities and our neighborhoods. And talking about the presentation from the Master Plan for Parks and Recreation, we all know that people want to feel safe wherever they live, whether it's to go out and walk their dog or just enjoy parks. And this plays into that safety. And talking to residents and sitting down with folks, as we were talking about the big picture of violence prevention and reduction, one of the key things we found out is that some folks don't even feel safe leaving their own apartment. So we can't have a conversation about, you know, balance reduction in their neighborhood if they don't feel safe in their own apartment and their own where they live. So that was the beginning and that was part of why the name was actually changed from the Office of Crime Prevention to the Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. And talking to some other, because the city of Columbia is now a member of the National Office of Crime Prevention Networks. It's about 30 different cities across the country who have Office of Crime Preventions or an Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. So we're now a part of that when it comes to connections, when it comes to networking, when it comes to being part of really a team of other states and other cities who've been doing this work. But there are other Office of Neighborhood Safety engagements that are out there. So that's why we patterned it there. So it's not a total Columbia concept. There are other on-ices, as they're called, across the country. So again, that was part of the name change to really for three main reasons. The first one was to really just distinguish of what the office wanted to really strive and do, and that's neighborhood safety and engagement. The second thing was just to, again, differentiate from any of the department here at the city of Columbia. When it comes down to, a lot of times people hear violence prevention, they think law enforcement and police. I know that being a former police officer. So we would always get questions initially about, okay, you're arresting this person, investigating this X, Y, Z. And we had to tell folks, hey, that's not our role. That's not within our office, that falls within our police department. So that was the second thing as far as the name change. The third thing was really just listening to residents and getting their feedback. A lot of them would talk about violence prevention. They felt the word was scary or is intimidating. So we've gotten feedback that Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement is a lot more inviting as we go out. So we're doing the rebranding on that, really from the training and development piece, securing and administering funding, just in the office's budget alone when it comes to the ARPA dollars that we have, administering that, of course, and budgeting. But also since the time the office has started, we have a score for award now for the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund. So we've got, well, we received $509,000, just a little over. And we're working with two professionals through professional service contracts and they are actually providing outreach throughout the city of Columbia. But also we've received two Bureau of Justice Assistance, BJA grants, and FY23 and FY24. The grant in 23 was focused on prevention and education. And so some of the initiatives that are right there, that's being paid for through the FY23. When we talk about the FY24 grant, that was specifically for training and evaluation. And again, when we talk about training and evaluation, that was based on feedback, that was based on working with community partners. That was based on doing some asset mapping and looking and see who's available. Realizing that when we talk about our local nonprofits, there are a lot of them that have the passion, but don't have the infrastructure. They don't have the capacity to do this work, right? So when we applied for funding in the FY24, we added all that in there. So now we get that funding, so we'll be doing training courses. We'll have national folks come in. We'll have folks come in that will actually be doing certification courses. We're working on a training academy that will be established as well too. And all that will be paid for through the funding of FY24. Another thing is the community grant support. We've actually, through our office, have helped four different other organizations get funding themselves by working with them. One of the South Carolina Philharmonic with their Music in My Neighborhood. Another one, we just got an email this morning from Girl Get Up Society who focuses on mental health and for girls, that's the second one they've gotten. But just as far as them expanding their services and being able to offer more in our communities through the assistance of the office. When we talk about those initiatives, again, the Together We Can Stop the Violence, that's a series of videos. We've got two videos already that we've been going to schools, churches, anywhere that would ask us to. And we've been showing those videos, but also having discussions about how we can all work together and stop violent crime. Also as far as just balance reduction. We know that this thing really takes an approach that everyone has to be all hands on deck. It's not just the responsibility, we talk about the city or for law enforcement. We need our community members, our residents to be involved and engaged. So that's the premise of the Together We Can Stop the Violence.
Can you talk a little bit more about the Together We Can Stop the Violence video?
Yes, sir.
How long is that video?
It's two videos, they're both a little over a minute a piece. So together it's about four minutes. So they're not very long videos.
You're playing them today?
We have the link today, we can play them today.
Sorry, I didn't.
If you all like, we can. But they're not long videos at all. But again, they really come and talk about how we all can work together. They talk about some statistics through the city of Columbia. But that was specifically focused, again, we wrote that into the grant for FY23. Another thing that's in that FY23 grant is really strengthening the partnership with the school district, working with them more. So we've got funding in there for prevention programming that's also tied into the Choose, Peace, Create, Change. So that's a youth-focused initiative where we're working with young people to talk about teen dating violence awareness, to talk about anti-bullying, to talk about conflict resolution, talk about handling peer pressure. All of that is covered under Action to Choose, Peace, Create, Change. And then, of course, the Four Block Promise Initiative. That's an initiative really to build up and really work more with our faith-based leaders across the city. When we announced it back in December, we talked about how different places of worship and faith-based leaders can be more active, more engaged, more involved because we know not everybody's going to come up here to City Hall for our meetings, not everybody's going to reach out. But there are individuals that go to their place of worship two, three, four times or more per week. And as the mayor pointed out, we have over 1,400 designated places of worship in the city. So since that time in December, we've been able to reach out and sit down with about nine different faith-based leaders. And we've got some very exciting initiatives that'll be coming up. The first one will actually be a Mobile Community Outreach Day on April 26. And so in working with Eau Claire Baptist Church, they're actually going to fill up their 15-passenger bus And so in working with Eau Claire Baptist Church, they're actually going to fill up their fifteen-passenger bus with clothing, food items, and other things, and we're going into an actual community. We'll set up and we'll have service providers there as well. But just different things like that, different initiatives, how the churches can be more involved, more engaged, but also through the partnership with the City of Columbia. So that'll actually be the first event. You'll all get those details on as well. Increased engagement. That's been, like I said, a big key.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
About the Four Block Promise. That has shown some success, I think. Based on what I've heard and based upon some folk, faith leaders that I've talked to. They are really engaged with that faith Four Block Promise. The data that is already out there, the Eau Claire bus is available. What other, what other churches are going to do the same thing that Eau Claire has done?
So some of the other churches that we're working in that area is Grace Christian Ministries, also Ridgewood Baptist, Reformation Lutheran Church. And there are others that are on the list, and I don't have the list before us. Yes, sir. We went with Gill Creek as well, too. So what we did is we looked at our areas of highest opportunity. Some will say our areas of more violence. I say highest opportunity. And we reached out to our faith-based leaders in those areas first, because we're strategic about wanting to partner with different churches and places of worship in those areas to see what they were already doing, what they had existing. Because a lot of them are doing some great work when it comes to ministry and outreach already. So it just was a conversation of sitting down to talk about how can we partner? How can we enhance what you're doing? So we've also got some resource fairs that are planned, workforce development, work fairs that are planned. Getting the SCORF partners to go out and talk about opioid prevention and the Narcan giveaways and training. So there's a number of different things. We're gonna compile a list. Another thing that they asked to do is just set up a quarterly convenience of some of those faith-based leaders. Because as we saw, and a lot of them mentioned that, you will have three, four, five churches right next to one another, but they don't necessarily collaborate currently. So just as we talk about other places and other businesses and other entities in the city operating in silos, it's the same with our faith-based communities.
Will they be strategic in terms of what the Eau Claire is going to do? Will they be strategic with other faith-based organizations in terms of giving out those things on the bus?
Yes, sir, and that's the plan.
I didn't find communities.
Yes, sir. And that's the plan. We're utilizing the data we have from the city, and that's why we're reaching out to the partners that are, the churches that are already in that area, in those areas. And then we're bringing in community service providers. One of the things that's been key, one of the things that's been key, I'll let the video play before I say that. Okay, that's the Charleston coming out. Let me slow down as I speak. I apologize. Well, as that, that's coming up. One of the things I will say as well, too, is majority of time, anytime we have an event, we will always have service providers there. And those are folks that are providing services with substance use, higher education, mental health, workforce development. Because one of the things in talking to folks is that today may not be the day that they're ready to get help. They just may not be willing. You can have fifty service providers there, but if they're not ready that day, it's not gonna make a difference.
No need for it to don't.
Correct. Yes, sir, because it's not gonna be effective. But as we have events, we always have service providers there because that day may be the day that they do decide to get help, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Trevon, I would just ask, like you went through the three programs deployed. You were talking so fast that I couldn't get my good notes.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you could provide us just what a one- or two-sentence description of all of the programs, because it's a whole lot. But I want to make sure I can, if someone asks, I can at least have an idea of.
Correct. Yes, ma'am. I can do that. So we break it down by three pillars, right? And so our pillars, again, is research and strategic planning. That's the first pillar. And then community outreach and engagement. So that's where those initiatives come from when it comes to the Choose, Peace, Create, Change. That's more youth-centered. It's partnering with schools. It's partnering with churches and just neighborhoods. But it's really spreading the message of they can be change agents. It's a built-in curriculum when it comes to anti-bullying, teen dating violence prevention, and addressing peer pressure. So that's the Choose, Peace, Create, Change. We've got the summary, so we'll make sure you get that. Yes, okay.
I process a little differently.
Dr. Fordham, one question regarding the Four Block Promise. Is there any brochures or information about that, or is that direct kind of communication between your department and the churches in the target areas?
So so far, it's been direct communication. We are, as we're doing the rebranding, because again, with the new logo of the city and then the name change with the office. So we're currently working with PR now to redo all of our marketing material, so that will be one of the things that's up there. But it'll also be updated on the city's, on our page and the website as well.
Because what has traditionally happened, of course, is that by word of mouth.
Yes, sir.
And word of mouth is the, you know, you telephone, tell a person.
Right. Yes, sir.
You know the other part. Because I, because some churches, some churches telephone, telegraph, and you know the other part.
Telegram.
Yeah.
And we've had to be very strategic because we are getting a lot of phone calls about the Four Block Promise. Yes, sir.
That had been the crux of it.
Telegram.
Some churches feel like, oh, well, I was on the Four Block list, but they may not be in the target area.
Correct, and that's why we've been strategic. And we've explained to some others of what we're doing, how we're doing it, but we still meet with them as well, too. But right now, we've established what the party is. And so this is one of the first videos when it comes to Together We Can Stop the Violence.
Have you ever heard the sounds of a caring community, the cascades of conversations between teenagers about today's happening?
On story school with everything from today's basketball game, what they seen on the shade room, and which homeboy this month they come to act against.
Young children playing on playgrounds where competition and karate goes hand to hand. Elders sitting on park benches going back in the days of nostalgic conversations.
Reminiscing on what the neighborhood used to be before the guns came in handing out death certifications.
Police and public servants serving notice that the needs of the people is first priority.
That unity is needed to protect the majority, but community is needed to protect the minority.
Together, we can make this happen. No longer do we have to hear the sounds of loved ones crying from the plague of gangs, guns, and domestic violence.
We can become the heroes of our own stories and take back the power from the spirit of divine together in alliance.
No longer, no longer do we have to sit angry in silence. Let's go back in the days when each one, each one, and no child was left.
This is a call to all communities, servants, pillars, from the porches to the pool pit, from the corners to the block.
We are reaching out to community leaders, pastors, educators, military, and emergency workers, teachers, all hands on deck, all positive energy is needed. Stand up in alliance. Together, we are Columbia.
And together, it is about the violence.
So that's the first video. The other one is just more about the stats, but that's the first one. Again, we take these into different places. We talk about it. We have a discussion. And I will say this video right here, again, when we shot it, was the Office of Violent Crime Prevention. What y'all see right there is a result of a lot of teamwork and collaboration. From working with the police department to the coroner's office. Jayanna Carter was very instrumental in getting this recorded, even to the cars that y'all saw driving through. That was for the local car club. Parks and Recreation coordinating with Hyatt Park. They had an event that day, but it all worked out. So it just shows really the collaborations as far as an active community. And this is the second one. It is more about the statistics.
And this is why unity is needed.
In South Carolina in twenty-twenty-one, there were six hundred and forty-one homicide cases.
But community can treat.
Most women that get murdered is because of domestic violence issues or family issues going on in the household.
Unity is needed.
The rate of homicide in South Carolina has increased by fifty-six percent over the last ten years.
But community can treat.
See, males are already seven times more likely to die from firearm accidents than females.
And this is why unity is needed.
But in South Carolina, the males are two times more likely to die than the average US male.
The community is needed.
The Columbia Police Department reported there was four hundred and thirty-one hit persons, shooting victims in the last five years. Of those four hundred and thirty-one victims, three hundred and ninety-six was black. Three hundred and sixty-one were male, and seventy were female. Now, these are just stats. The average age of a shooting victim over the last five years was twenty-nine. The most common age was nineteen, and majority was fifty, the mass of the victim. I was born in ages of nineteen and thirty-eight. See, we need you and I.
U N I T Y. U N I T Y, our community. U N I T Y.
Protective black kids, queens, and Indians.
We're calling up all community leaders, servants, pillars, stand up in alliance. Together, we are Columbia.
And together, it is about the violence.
So that second one was just based on state and local stats. Again, the key to those were now we can take those videos that come out. The Together We Can Stop the Violence is a public safety awareness campaign PSA that, again, we wrote into the FY twenty-three BJA grant. So that's coupled with the discussion. That's coupled with letting folks know that, hey, there are services out there. Violence is not the answer. Unity in our communities, peace and harmony is what it's all about. So that's why I say even when we show the videos, we set it up to where we have service providers available to let folks know what the alternatives are. So those are the existing initiatives that are under the community engagement.
Is there a way to add the graphics of the numbers so that people understand what we're really talking about here? Because the numbers are not good, and I think sometimes numbers draw people to realize we gotta change, not just the word.
Yes, sir. I believe that's possible. I'm not the graphic guru. I think it, I think it should be possible. They're adding in text.
Yeah.
And even in the first one, I think, you know, it'd be great for community and unity to splash up on the screen as well at times and remind people how important it is.
The introduction from Star Wars?
And they used their drone to do it. But one of the things I will say is we got two other videos that'll be shot in the same or recorded in this series, so we can definitely loop those in. But the next two will actually be about storytelling. It'll be about how violence has impacted individuals personally. So that would definitely be a good segue as far as adding those graphics into there as far as the actual numbers.
Do these show on the city's pages or?
So Public Relations has them. I think we were talking initially about getting them shown. I'm not sure if we got that yet, so I will definitely follow on that.
Summertime's around the corner. Perfect time to get it out.
And we will be increasing as far as getting out and discussing those as well.
They are very active on social media. On it.
Yes.
By day, the Lord is helping.
And so that's been the increasing engagement piece. Also, as far as the rebranding, as I just talked about, some of the things we've been able to rebrand and along with the city's rebrand, but also just switching up the messaging and focusing a lot more community, safety, the engagement piece. The message that it takes all of us, as we talk about that unity and working together, so. But we are working to get more of the printed materials for the office and as far as the messaging as well, too. So these are just some upcoming events. Again, we've gone through March. But I will say that both the SCORF Resource Fair and the Community Resource Fair went very well. The Community Resource Fair was in partnership with Bethlehem Baptist Church, Wiley Kennedy Foundation. There were over thirty service providers that were there. I know at least two hundred, maybe two hundred and forty people came through. One of the key important things that people that came through to the service providers, those were individuals that came through off of North Main. They're walking up and down and between CPDs, Richland County, some other folks were able to corral them over to get some help, get some services. I know there were at least eighteen people that signed up that day for case management through the SCORF. So again, them coming through, and one of the key things as I talk about these numbers, particularly when we talk about folks signing up. I want to really impress upon folks that we could probably think about the hundred and forty-plus thousand in the City of Columbia. But we know when it comes to those who truly need help, that's a smaller number. So when we talk about eighty, eighteen folks signed up in one day, that is amazing. That is amazing. Folks who've decided they want to get that help and they want to get the case management, which will follow them throughout the rest of this year and moving forward. So again, April will be partnership events that we've got coming up with USC and Big Home Little Homie for mentoring. It'll be a Super Saturday event. Also, Youth Violence Prevention Week, we're working with Richland One, of course, with the school district. We'll be going inside several schools. I think we're up to six now to talk about handling peer pressure, to talk about anti-bullying, and also talk about conflict resolution. So that'll be key. We're also going to host a social and emotional learning event. That's just a big word, again, to talk about young people dealing with their feelings and emotions, so that'll be going on as well, too. And then we're gonna follow it up that Saturday with the Poetry Slam and Talent Showcase, artistic expressions. So again, that's for youth and adults. We were able to get some journals. And one of the big things that we've seen, and I'm on the statewide planning committee for the Department of Public Health, their Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Planning Committee. When they did their surveys, they found out over eighty-nine percent of violent crime can be attributed to a major cause, which is in a personal conflict. And the main thing is folks not handling their personal conflicts, right, resolving them. So conflict resolution mediation skills are huge. So we're not only offering these courses for our young people, our young adults, but also our adults as well, too. May, Mental Health Awareness Month, we'll be partnering again with Girl Get Up Society for a community walk. And also the Community Day, where they'll be doing the free mental health awareness check, wellness checks. This year, some of the guys asked us about it, so there's a mixer to talk specifically about breaking down the stigma of mental health among men. So that'll be on May twenty-eighth. Of course, June goes into Gun Violence Awareness Month, so we, the CVI workshop is in the works of solidifying some things. One of the things I will say, as we're planning on partnering on something that would be the first in the state, first in the state's history. So we're finalizing some things right now, but those details will be released soon as far as a community-based violence intervention and prevention workshop that will be hosted here in the City of Columbia. Of course, wear orange, and then once you go through Gun Violence Awareness Month, so we'll have some events at the end of the month as well, too, working with some community partners. The key to all the events that we've been working on so far is that it's not so much on the office. It's really coordinating and collaborating with other community partners. We get a lot of folks that will call, that will text and say, hey, I got this idea. We'll meet with them and say, okay, there's another organization, another entity in your area that wants to do the exact same thing, and then we pair them together. What can the resources look like? Like I said, the schools have been very, very willing to actually host events and to partner on events, so that way we can have access to the young people. And just as far as working with churches and now, too, and just other businesses to really boost up those partnerships. As we talk about next steps and moving forward, again, you have, I won't read all of them. We actually started a Local Link, which is a weekly kind of publication, because we're getting different events that people have asked us about that we're sending out. Like folks know, hey, these aren't City of Columbia events, but this is going on in your community. This is things that are going on, and people are really responding to that. So we've been sending those out. We're also working on a monthly newsletter, and all of that will go on our website, again, updating and overhauling the website as well. We're also working on a digital resource bank on the website where folks can go. One of the initial asks was to create a resource guide. We've got a first iteration or edition of a resource guide, particularly for government agencies. We've been very cautious about adding in local nonprofits for the simple fact of we don't know their exact status, with some of them that are operating or everything like that. So but we do have, as far as all of the government agencies, we have them listed in there. As we talk about the capacity building and training, that will be part of the Academy, the Peacemaker Academy. So now we do know who we're dealing with, because they'll be part of the Peacekeeper Academy. They've gotten this training. They've gone through all of these different things when it comes to community-based violence intervention. So that will assist us in knowing who the partners are. And if we're ever asked, and as we're working with them, we can say, here's a list of partners that are on here. Again, so this is just the list right here going through. I continue to collect data, preparing the reports and all as well, too. That's been a big thing. One of the things we've been asked about is just hosting quarterly, quarterly forums throughout the community as well. So we'll be doing those also.
I'm sorry, Trevon, you said the academy.
Yes.
What's the name of that again?
It will be the Peacekeepers Academy.
Peacekeepers.
Correct. And again, that's, that's part of the initiative coming through the BJA FY twenty-four funding. Because we are doing, as far as them training folks, and we're getting the national folks to come in. It definitely looks good for us, and it gives us a semblance of, okay, these folks have gotten the training, and it allows a way for the trainings to continue by having the Peacekeepers Academy.
And is that for individuals or is that for nonprofits?
It's for local organizations. So not nonprofits as well, if there's any businesses as well, too, that want to become sponsors, partners, they can be part of that. Again, it's just a centralized way for us to be able to connect folks and know who's part of the network. That's a centralized way to kind of do that.
Thank you.
Yep. As we look beyond, we're talking about a strategic plan for five years, which will run through twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, excuse me, twenty thirty. But just as we talk about community safety, those supportive services programs, that's been the key so far with the office, is really being able to work with residents who need services, who need the additional services. But also being intentional when it comes to the wraparound services, the supportive services to complement the work that's already being done, whether it's, you know, at Rapid Shelter for those who are unsheltered, whether it's by law enforcement and the job that they're doing, other first responders as well, too. How can we continue to connect residents to services that they very well need? So that's, that's been key to that as well, too. So that's as far as the goals. When we talk about funding for the office, currently the office's budget is operating still under the ARPA dollars, which will all expire December thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So we do have a current budget right now for the rest of this fiscal year and the next fiscal year as well, too. We've got two BJA awards, one expires September thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, which the initiative for Together We Can Stop the Violence falls under. And also Choose, Peace, Create, Change falls under that. So we also have a part-time position that's funded under that. So we knew that when we got it, we would have about two years for that individual part-time to kind of really get in work. So we knew that when we got it, we would have about two years for that individual part-time to, to kind of really get in work, so. But those expired, the second one expires on September third of twenty twenty-seven. And then of course, the SCORE Award, it's an annual award, there is funding there, I think to the tune of, of a good amount. Um, but you do have to apply each year, so the current award for SCORE for our office will apply, will expire September thirty of twenty twenty-five. And so again, that, those, that's the staff that's in our office right now. Uh, first thirteen, fourteen months, I was hitting the ground running, 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 running. I'm blessed and fortunate to have three other amazing individuals now who are doing a great job. Um, getting out, being in the community, uh, the engagement piece, they all bring different pieces of expertise as well to, as well to the office and to the team. Um, so. And I know I may have been talking fast, so we have this, we can send it to you, any other information that you would like, we can also follow up as well too. They are not, they're working on different projects, so they are not here.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Dr. Fordham, one question.
Sorry.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Is there any opportunity for individuals to donate to their office through a foundation who may wanna support that endeavors they all do? I know that y'all rely heavily on funding and grants and political wins change sometimes, but the work that y'all doing is really important. And I know people probably would like to support it more if they could.
So currently there is not a foundation or any nonprofit that's set up or.
You gotta make it to the city.
Tied to the office.
You're designated for that.
Right, but that is one thing. That is one thing that we've seen in other offices and other cities is that they do have a foundation, they do have a local nonprofit that's attached to them. Um, and they do a lot, the city does a lot more of the coordination, and then that local nonprofit is the one that drives everything, and then they receive the funding. So that is one thing that is working in other places as well, but currently for, for us, there's not.
So we just finished the process of establishing um the foundation that will be tied to homeless services and Rapid Shelter Columbia. Um, they're gonna be co-located at Fort Tenon One Main on the third or second floor. I'm trying to remember all my floors as people are moving in, and it's, it's gonna be a great um opportunity for Kamisha and Trevon and their teams to work together as well. So we'll look at that, um, that foundation, but yeah, Parks and Rec Foundation because he obviously works really closely with that group under Henry's leadership. So there might be some opportunities for donations through those channels.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving right along into executive session. Thank you, Trevon, Dr. Fordham, great job. Um, thank you. Mr. Mayor, we can, are you ready for executive session?
Yeah.
Need a motion?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, we enter into executive session. All right, so what, we're doing three and four? Okay, the discussion of matters relating to the proposed location and provision of services, encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the areas served by the public body pursuant to SECO thirty-four seventy-eight five, outline redevelopment project, Capital City Stadium. And also discussion of negotiations incident proposed contractual arrangements pursuant to SECO thirty-four thirty-four seventy-eight two, Vista Bid and Core Campus Stop War Agreement.
Thank you.
Who's our second?
Second.
Motion is second, Madam Clerk, can you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Herbert.
Hi.
Dr. Bustle.
Hi.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, we will clear.